The October 7, 2020 Select Board Meeting of the Town of Mansfield is called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Well, it's nice to be back and it's also a little weird. Welcome to my colleagues. I haven't seen them all assembled together in quite a while. I have a statement to read. Whereas both the Federal Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health have advised residents to take extra measures to put distance between themselves and other people to further reduce the risk of being exposed to COVID-19, Governor Baker has issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20. In order to satisfy the open meeting law requirements, today's Town of Mansfield Select Board Meeting will be available to the public via GoToWebinar and Mansfield Cable. The instructions for joining via GoToWebinar are in the meeting notice on the town's website at www.mansfieldma.com and then clicking on today's date on the calendar. Town Manager's Report.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent out an update this afternoon as there's an update to the October 5 report. So the first item was about this open meeting and our new layout and our new requirements. And Carrie sent that under separate cover as well. The next item was for November meeting dates. I know it's going to be on our agenda later on for this evening, but I just wanted to just be able to highlight because Veterans Day, we have two holidays on Wednesdays, Veterans Day on the 11th, Thanksgiving Eve, which were closed in 11:25. So Town Hall will be closed, which caused the Planning Board to secure 11:04 and 11:18 at 7:30 PM for their meetings. So we can still meet on the 4th and the 18th, but we still need to be on the earlier side and wrap up no later than 7:00 PM. If we do choose this option, that will be the time we can allow ourselves for two hours from 5:00 to 7:00. If we do not, then we're holding the schedule open for Mondays. So we reserved on Monday, 11:02, 11:09, and 11:23 at 5:30. So when we get to that point in the agenda tonight, it's important because we can free up significant time slots in the schedule that people are waiting to book the November meetings. So that would be fantastic. We really need to get to that tonight. Something certainly to note with school openings, schools at this point in time will begin in-person instruction on 10:15, and that's going to be on the alternating whether you're in Cohort A or Cohort B. And so it's going to be on the 15th will be Cohort A, beginning on the 16th will be Cohort B. They'll alternate Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. On Wednesday, of course, will be the day they will be remote learning. Elections and ballots. The town clerk has been busy preparing for the upcoming election, and while over 2,500 absentee ballots were received and sent out, we are waiting more ballots to fill the need of approximately 5,000 vote-by-mail ballots. The delay in receiving ballots is an issue statewide as notated by the town clerk. This will be more to follow. Keep your breast on that. On the topic of CEMREC, yesterday, 10/6, the CEMREC Board of Directors met, and we met and we discussed the current state of the building project at High Rock. And I'm pleased to report that the project is ahead of its substantial completion contract schedule. The contract date for substantial completion was 11/16. It will be done by the end of October. And I put a note in here to please reserve the ribbon-cutting date of Tuesday, November 17 at 11:00 AM at the High Rock facility. So certainly that's positive news, and Director Verdon has done a great job in overseeing in addition to the clerk of the works on the projects as well.
Kevin, that's great because that was actually on my list of, and I think I mentioned that I took a tour. Since there's four towns involved, there are a ton of state legislature, because there's state, I mean, we got Easton, so there's state senators. I would like to, I know I work for him, I'm impartial, but Senator Timmeltie, who's not a senator anymore, he was really the one that was the genesis of this whole thing. So I would like, and I guess it's up to all the towns, I'd like to see him cutting the ribbon. But that's up to the board and some, if you could throw that out there, because it's really his bill at the State House that got all this stuff. So if you could just throw that out, I would appreciate it.
Sure will.
It'll probably get me out of my mind. Thank you.
You're welcome. I gave a large DPW construction update, so that's certainly included in the packet. But just briefly, is the update for today, October 7. If you've been through downtown, there's a lot of things that have been going on since the last time that we met. So for the Old Colony pathway from 214 Rumford down to the Old Colony section behind Jimmy's, they've done a tremendous amount of installation of the new concrete that's been done. Seen the trees certainly planted along Old Colony, which came out great. And there's still, of course, work that has to be done. The road has to be milled and paved and the new striping to go. So it'll make much more sense once you actually see all the new striping on Old Colony when the road reconstruction project is done. But they did a wonderful job so far. Really, really good. And we were mentioning that at our downtown committee that we just had this week as well. Maple Street, from Kate Springs to Franklin Street, the tree and drainage work is now complete. The reclamation is going to be beginning today, and we're starting the tree removal for the new parking lot over at Kate Springs. We're waiting for all the paving to be done together, so for what you see outside the front door of the handicap entrance where you came in tonight, that paving, as well as all the construction that's going on in the North Main Street parking lot that leads out to the new pathway that's going to go out to Rumford Avenue, all that paving is going to be done together as one lump sum. So the 214 Rumford lot, the North Main Street parking lot, and the paving that's going to happen outside of here. And so that's certainly going to be done for this construction season. One of the things that we're still waiting on here, we can't get the large granite step delivered that's going to be right in front of Memorial Hall. That's what's holding that up as well. We talked about snow and then just ongoing ground maintenance from the brush cutting. The sweeping schedule, the next sweep of downtown is October 16. And the crosswalk and stop bars being painted is about 90% complete now. On the topic of reopening, I started to work with our COA Director Joe Madrazo on the issue of providing small group opportunities with properly-distanced activities. So as you're aware, the season's changing, the people are not going to be able to be outdoors, and we're certainly concerned with our older adult population. So Joe's trying to be able to have small group activities to be developed, and then we can get that out to people. So while the building won't be open, just like the library's not completely open, we are going to look for the opportunity to have small group activities, so that'll be 10 people or less. And we can run the same type of program a couple times a day for different type of sessions, and people can be able to sign up for them. So I just wanted to make sure that we touch base on that. On the topic of, I'm thinking painstakingly, a lot of time working with Matt Smith, I just made another series of changes today that Matt's going to be going through. And then he's actually coming to town on Friday to be able to go through and to make some final details. So that will be all ready for you for your 10/21 meeting. And so that's up and running. Still working on getting an update of relief, but they are permitted through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we're just waiting for them to be able to get their necessary construction things together. But that is moving forward, and they have started to order some things for the new area. The last COVID update that I included on the 5th, the number of cases at that point, eight in isolation, recovered 199, for total from the beginning of 221, and for the total related deaths at 14. And then other than that, we put some information in regards to tips for a safe and healthy Halloween. That was included in the update, and all those things have been shared on social media as well. And that concludes my report, and this is one item from Mr. LaCass on tax classification.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we would like to propose that the tax classification presentation occur on November 4, and that you perhaps vote on the split on November 18. That, I think, coincides nicely with where the accessor is as far as the recap is concerned, and I think gives the board and the public plenty of time to review the information and for you to take a vote on the 18th. So that would be our request.
November 4-ish or November 17-ish, depending what we do with the Wednesday, Monday meetings because of the conflict with the Planning Board. Yeah, we'll get to that in a couple of minutes.
So it's ish?
Yeah. Is that, well, we'll determine in the discussion later.
Sure.
Is that it, Barry?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions before you?
Sure, Neil.
Kevin, on the, did you say there's a new parking lot at Kate Springs? Is that like, is that adding any capacity or anything? You know, people go hiking on those trails back there and this, okay. I just didn't know if there was something new there. And then on, all right. And then on relief, you said they had state approval. Does that mean they have this CCC approval? Because last I heard they were like 57th in line or something, or?
They have, they've been approved in those with something MI signed.
Okay. So it's really all on that?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions at this point? No? Okay, thank you. Residents' questions and comments. I'll read the following statement. It's important to us that you have a platform for your questions and comments during this meeting. Therefore, to ask questions or make a public comment during tonight's virtual meeting, you must have registered and joined the meeting via GoToWebinar, where you now have the ability to submit your question or comments through the questions option in your control panel, or you can use the raise your hand option to be allowed to speak. There's also an option that I'll discuss shortly for people who have called in. Beginning at the October 21, 2020 Select Board Meeting, members of the public will also be able to appear in person at the Select Board Meeting to address the board directly. To attend, members of the public must call the Select Board's office at 508-261-7372. That's the Select Board's office at 508-261-7372, or email selectboard@mansfieldma.com to register, as there will only be 17 people in total allowed in the meeting room at any one time per current state regulations. Carrie, do we have any questions via GoToWebinar? We're waiting to see if we have any questions via GoToWebinar.
So, Mr. Chair, at this point, we have Peter Wiggins. So Peter, could you try and speak and see if we can hear you?
Hi, everybody, hi!
Hello, Peter.
Yes, I've been trying to view your videos on the chat, and none of them appear.
I'm sorry, Peter. Are you saying that you can't see any of our bright-beaming faces?
What?
Are you saying you can't see us?
Yep.
Okay, I will work on that. Any others, anything else, Peter?
Yes, hello? Plus, plus, the audio is choppy.
Is it better now?
Hello?
Okay, well, we'll work on that, Peter, thank you.
No? Hello?
Hello?
Yes?
Go ahead. Are you all set, Peter?
Peter, the chair is asking if you're all set.
Yes, and Carrie, Nancy, I can't see the videos.
We'll be working on that, Peter.
We are working on it. I apologize for the inconvenience tonight.
That's okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for understanding, Peter.
You're welcome, Carrie.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, is that it, Carrie, I assume?
Yes, if anybody has called in, if you want to speak now, please click star six so that we can hear you.
Hearing no one, let's proceed to item four. Consideration to adopt the Order of Eminent Domain for Navigation Easements and to take by and through the Mansfield Airport Commission under the authority vested in said airport commission by virtue of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 79 and Chapter 90. Navigation easement number 4-142 over property located at 190 North Washington Street, Norton, Mass. 02766, and navigation easement number 4-140 over property located at 198 North Washington Street, Norton, Mass. 02766, and to execute and deliver any and all documents necessary to effect said Order of Domain. Kevin?
Yes, Carrie, do we have Matt Karen on the line?
Yes, Matt is here. So Matt, if you want to turn your camera on, and the board should be able to hear you.
Everybody hear me okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear him in the room?
Yes, we can hear you, and we see you.
They're extremely muffled, and I actually, I couldn't hear exactly what was actually said or asked of me.
So Carrie, if you could please explain to Matt that it's his time to be able to give a summary of tonight's action that's before the Select Board?
Just asked if you could give a summary to the board of the easement?
Sure, okay. So assuming everyone can hear me, so the document that you have in front of you this evening, the Order of Eminent Domain Takings, is the instrument that will be used to record the navigation easements with the Registry of Deeds, and this will complete the process for the eminent domain takings over those two parcels. Recall back on June 23, 2020, that the Select Board at the annual town meeting voted to approve the order, not the order of takings, but the eminent domain takings over these two parcels. At this point in time, we're looking to record this, like I said, with the Registry of Deeds, and pay the fair market value to the property owners for the navigation easements that we're going to be taking.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have any questions? I see no questions. Does the clerk have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to vote to adopt the Order of Eminent Domain for Navigation Easements and to take by and through the Mansfield Airport Commission under the authority vested in said airport commission by virtue of Mass. General Law Chapter 79 and Chapter 90. Navigation easement number 4-142 over property located at 190 North Washington Street, Norton, Mass. 02766, and navigation easement number 4-140 over property located at 198 North Washington Street, Norton, Mass. 02766, and to execute and deliver any and all documents necessary to effect said Order of Eminent Domain.
Second.
Second. Any discussion now? Hearing nine, I assume this is still considered a virtual meeting, so we'll take a roll call. Mr. Trowbridge?
Aye.
Mr. Aptowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenfeld?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, point of order?
Yes.
I think because since we're all in the same room, and we can see each other, I think you don't have to do a roll call vote.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that going forward. Thanks for telling me now.
So I pass around Mr. Chair for signature.
Okay. For item five, I'm going to turn the chair over to Vice Chairman Ryan. On advice of Town Council, when I first started this job, because I'm so, I'm in the business, so to say, he suggested that I recuse myself from such discussions. So I'll be leaving the room and returning after this discussion and vote. Thank you.
Okay, item five is consideration to vote and sign documents for the October 15, 2020 bond issuance in the amount of $4,175,000.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That, Mr. Chair?
Sure. Is there an official written motion, or that's it?
There was no official one, so I'm just going to make that motion.
All right.
A second?
All right. Motion, a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Good question. Barry, what's this for?
So this was for the road work and design of 2.875 million loan authorization and $1.3 million for the water mains. These were approved on November 5, 2019, and the good news is that when they went out to bid, the final power value was not 4.175, but because of the premium, they netted out to about $3.9 million.
Great.
That was approved at last Fall's Town Meeting?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? You all set? All right. Yes.
Mr. Chair, we have to actually read the entire bond authorization language. Carrie, can you email me that language so I can send to Mr. Ryan, please?
Or Mr. Ryan.
It's a very long document, so maybe if we could take a pause on number five, and go to number six at the moment, and we'll go back to number five?
So bring Frank in now. We've already voted, so he could come in, right?
No, we didn't.
We didn't vote yet, no.
Why don't you withdraw your motion for now? I'll take my motion back for now, and then we can move on, right?
Okay. And then when we get that, do it again, okay. Oh. Do you have it?
Just hasn't.
She said it's with the motions.
All right, we're not, we're going to stop it, but now we're continuing.
This whole thing? Oh my God. Okay, and I got to read each column, the numbers?
Need to read the entire two pages.
Okay. For all of our friends at home, now's a good time to go get something to eat. Okay. Vote of the Select Board. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Mansfield, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the Board held October 7, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody. So shouldn't we, should we vote first before I read this? Okay. But the way it's worded is? The way it's said is like we already did it. Sounds like we did it. This is like the past tense?
You still need to read it as presented.
What I'm saying is, should we?
And then just take the vote.
Okay. I don't agree, but I'll read it. Voted that the sale of the $3.9 million general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2020 bonds of the town dated October 15, 2020, the bonds, to FHN Financial Capital Markets at the price of $4,29289.65 in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on October 15 of the year, and the principal's amounts and bare interest at the respective rates as follows. I got to read each year, huh?
Yes.
2021, $260,000, 4%. 2022, $260,000, 4%. 2023 through 2026, $255,000, 4%. 2027 through 2034 is, I have to redo that. 2027 through 2028, $250,000, 4%. 2029, $250,000, 1%. 2030 through 2034, $250,000, 1.5%, and 2040 at $360,000, 2%. Why are we missing six years on this? Oh, I see down below, you got, never mind. The way it's set up, I got it. Hold on. Further voted that the bonds mature on October 15, 2040, shall be subject to mandatory redemption and mature as follows. Then you have 2035 through 2040, which were the years missing, at $60,000. Okay. And 2040 is the final maturity? Further vote that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a note of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 24, 2020, and an official statement dated October 1, 2020, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, being hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further vote that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further vote that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further vote that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures, in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds may be executed several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents, and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or in the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General, SF 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2, Section B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18-25, as amended, further suspended. Supplemented or modified by the executive order of the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12, 2020. Dated October 7, 2020, clerk of the Select Board. I'm going home.
Are you done?
You done?
Unfortunately, yes.
All right. Well done, Mr. Aptowitz. You want to make that motion again?
I'll move to sign the documents for the bond issuance for $4,175,000.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0 with Mr. Delvecchio recruiting himself.
I have to sign the first two. Yeah.
You missed a good reading.
It's right there.
Maybe you could get a job doing like, reading books on, you know, audible.
There's a lot of stuff to sign on those.
Okay. Call for the November 3, 2020 state election and sign the warrant.
Mr. Chair, have a motion here?
Please.
Mr. Chair, move to call for the November 3, 2020 election and sign the warrant.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing nine, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If the ayes have it, 5-0. Item seven, discussion and consideration of extension of allowance of outdoor table service for licensed on-premises consumption from November 1 of 2020 for any period up to 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. Do you have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I do. You ready to read it? Yes, I do. You ready? Will you read it?
When do we read it? I mean, that discussion based on that.
Mr. Chair, move to modify prior approvals, extending the allowance of outdoor table service for licensed on-premises consumption from November 1, 2020 for 60 days after the end of the state of emergency.
Is that a second? Okay. I forgot to ask if Kevin or Barry, do you have anything to add to that? Any discussion?
So it says extend existing agreements? What about if someone wants to start a new agreement?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that, Steve.
It says extend existing? Mr. Clerk, does it say that? Jess, does it say extend existing, or does it say...
To modify prior approvals, extending the allowance of outdoor table service for licensed on-premises consumption from November 1, 2020 for 60 days after the end of the state of emergency.
So if a new restaurant wants to get in the game, can they?
They can, and then as a motion of what you're doing to approve their license, you would include the same thing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Number eight, want to adopt a select board, board policy on conduct. I'm gonna turn this over to the, the members of the select board committee that worked on this, but I, I just wanna say that thank, thank you for providing us this draft. We should remember that it applies, it will apply, once we've come up with something to all of us, it's aspirational, we're not always perfect. And I think, hopefully, it'll help guide boards in the future, because while some of the things are obvious regarding interpersonal behavior, et cetera, and we try to live up to those as best we can, other things aren't immediately apparent to someone coming on board in terms of relationships with the various offices, et cetera. So I don't know who's gonna take up, lead the discussion, Neil or Mike?
I, I'll jump in there. You know, since we, I think it was when I first got elected to the select board, we talked about doing some policies, so I had accumulated a great deal of different policies that whatever I could find digitally online for people's websites. And the one that we took it from, I believe, was Holden. It was also recommended by town council as, as a, as a good one. I believe that was sent to us from Paul. And going through it, I felt that, you know, that had probably the cleanest and best language out of all the, all the select board policies that I had seen. So I, I threw a few over to Neil at one point, then we, I went back to the Holden one and sent that to Neil to review again, and he went in and kinda edited things out and made some notations. So the way this works is, we would have to want to adopt tonight if this is something that the board wants to consider, and we would have to approve it at our next select, select board meeting. And I'll leave it up to Neil if he wants to throw any, anything in there?
No, I mean, I'll just agree that I thought this was, you know, well-written, you could see the edits are mostly just, you know, changing the name of the board and things like that. There was only one really substantive edit, edit which we can discuss, which was about the issue of, you know, if a constituent comes to us with a complaint about something related to town government, what is the process that we should all follow? Do we go directly to the town manager? Should we all go, should we all go through the chair of the board? That was the only thing that I saw that was not clear to me. The rest of it, you know, things like speaking in a civil manner and treating people with respect, you know, seems like a, a no-brainer. So that's all that I found that was, you know, needs to be clarified. I don't know if other members here see other things that are missing, but that's what we're here to discuss.
Just in terms of process for clarification, by warning tonight... All set. By, by warning tonight, that doesn't mean we're taking action tonight, it means we, we could take action at the next meeting.
That's correct, but I mean, this is, this is the part where we should have discussion on.
Any other discussion? Mr. Schonfeld?
A few things, and I remember four years ago, we brought this up, when both Mike and I joined the board, I remember the great George Dantino was visibly upset about it, and that we didn't take any further action for, for many reasons. It does need editing, and I do like the fact that we are trying to look at a best practice. This one's about six years old, though. And so when we first started talking about this back in July, I reached out to MMA, the Select Board Association, for any kind of advice, and they got some pretty good stuff. I can look for that and share it, if you like, with the board for use. I think one of the things I saw was, it's not just a code of conduct, it should be a code of conduct and ethics. Especially something that's six years old, we should look to kind of, recent best practice is code of conduct and ethics, not just code of conduct. And so there are quite a few things in the ethics side of it that I would recommend we add. One other question I have is, doesn't our HR handbook, employee handbook, have a code of conduct as well? I thought we revisited that, was a couple years ago?
That would be the employees, not...
I know, we're kind of like employees, and we should at least be somewhat consistent with what the employees are following as well. Do you guys know, Kevin, Barry, if we have a... Yeah. Okay, thanks. So when you add in ethics to it as well, some of the others talk about rules of deliberation, you know, reinforcing some of the open meeting law tenants in here as well, so that the, the reader can, can get that information from there as well. I think in today's time, we should be more emphasizing, you know, supporting inclusivism within a statement here, I think that would be a good code of conduct and ethics point to make right now. I think use of our positions, use of our titles, needs to be addressed as well, from an ethics point of view. It's kind of in between the lines, like if you read community responsibility in here, realize that his or her primary responsibility is to all Mansfield citizens, read between the lines, the use of our titles as select board members is in there. I mean, we represent 25,000 members, and we need to be careful with the use of that title regardless. You know, so I think there's some, you know, it's a great start, and I think there's some edits, and I would like to encourage us to think about code of conduct and ethics, to kind of round out the entire thing.
All right, Steve, so you reached out for some material, did you share it with me?
Yeah, happy to share it. I gotta find it, I mean, some of it was from four months ago, some was from, I re, I re, asked for information just this week as well, when I thought of it, and I'll share it. I think they looked at, there's a nice presentation that I wish there was an audio to, that we could all listen, but who was it? Isabel Nichols from the MMA. So I'll send it on.
And you've had this a while?
What's that?
You've had this a while?
No, no, I reached out to her again this week and just got some, but I've had some examples of these for a few months.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Aptowitz, do you have any?
Just a general comment, I mean, I think this is something, you know, we've talked about other things where, like the goal thing, it's like you adopt it, and it's a, it's a, it's a moving target, things could keep, you know, you could keep adding, subtracting, I think, you know, I think we should get something in place, and we have to add or take stuff out, we do it as we go. We can make some grammatical stuff change, but hey, we should move forward with it. Adopt it.
I, I had a specific observation. I'm looking at the beginning of the, well, I don't know, may have printed out differently for you, but under item 2B, it says recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refrain from acting on constituent complaints as an individual outside of the administration. I, I think that's all well and good, but I think that one, one of the issues we've had ever since I've been involved in town government, and it's not just the select board, it's other boards too, there's always some, one or some few people who'll go directly, for example, will, will not follow the chain of command and go directly to a department or whatever and discuss policy issues without making management of the town aware of that or making other board members aware. And that's not specifically addressed in here, you know? So I think that we shouldn't be acting, we shouldn't go behind the backs of the administration to act on constituent complaints, nor should we be, you know, generally pursuing our own initiatives without some knowledge of the other board members and all the town management. So I'd like to see something like that reflected in there.
Yeah, I think that was my, my comment.
What was your comment?
I guess it came under 2D, you know, I added that comment about, that one says, "Refer all constituent or board member complaints to the, their, their documents," to the administration. I, I changed it to "Select Board Chair and Town Manager." So, yeah, it's a similar thing, it's like, I don't know, if somebody comes to me with a complaint, should I just go to you and you go to Kevin, or how do we, you know? I don't, you know, it'd end up being a lot of work for the chairperson.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm thinking more, and I, and I think that, again, is another instance where, where it makes some sense. I would think in that case, maybe it's brought to the town manager, but the, the chair is copied on it, for example.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I, I'm thinking more of some, not just complaints that people may have, but the, you know, situations where, say, for example, I think that when we're setting the tax rate, we should stand on our heads and, you know, review what they do in Colorado or something like that. You know, and going in to a particular department and having that lengthy discussion about that without running it through the town management is problematic to me, I don't know, I don't know. Mr. Schonfeld?
I think there's a couple of points you, you make there. Yes, complaints, we should not be working on behalf of any resident directly with the department if there's a complaint, whether it's, wherever it is. We should go through the chain of command so that it can be dealt with appropriately. Kevin should handle, or he should deem the handling of those complaints appropriately down the road. It's not our job to work on behalf of a constituent if they have an issue with a particular department or individual. I, I completely agree there, that's not our job, we're not administrative. But if it's like, like I work with Lee a lot on the Trashman Cycling Committee, Kevin knows that, do I have to ask anyone before I talk to him about it? No, it's part of my duties. Same with the assessors. You know, I'll talk to the chief assessor from time to time as liaison and so forth. So you're gonna have those conversations, and Kevin's fully aware that those are happening, and they're on behalf of the pursuit of the committee or the task force or the liaison relationship. When it comes to, you know, before the meeting, Barry and I just had a quick conversation about the, the trucks and the snow plowing, and something I reiterated last, was it Wednesday during the call, that, you know, we should have some kind of demonstration of the cost of one way versus the cost of the other way. Now, that's a side conversation that just, it's an expectation I communicated during a meeting and just following up. So, you know, it's a slippery slope, every last conversation doesn't need to go through any chain of command. We're five select board members, all voted in equally, we have the same rights, whether you're chair, vice chair, clerk, or, or anything else. But we need to be careful that we're acting on behalf of the, all the residents of the town of Mansfield, and we're, you know, making sure our staff is not pulled in multiple directions by the five or six of us, or seven of us, or eight heads that we have, kind of, so there's some kind of balancing approach there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The example you gave of the trash board is very good, the example of the, the assessors, or you've recently been named the liaison, so I guess it applies in that case also, although I think it's incumbent on all of us if we have a major policy initiative that we wanna pursue, that we make everyone aware of it, and I think we do a fairly good job of that. Mr. Trobridge?
I hear what you're saying, that we represent everybody, but this is the problem I have, Steve, when one individual goes to a department and they start talking about this is what they want, that department takes it as the board is asking for that, and that's not necessarily the case. It might be an individual wants that, and they really shouldn't be doing that.
No one's saying you represent the board, you represent yourself in order to make a decision on, like, what we talked about last week, in order to make a decision on or support a vote on the, you know, PFAS issue, or support a vote on the DPW request, there's information that's, that's necessary. And if you ask the information in open form, that's the key here, and that's what this code of conduct needs to include, that we need to abide by. All of our business is done in open form, absolutely every last second of it. I mean, you know, there's some administration, except for agenda, everything needs to be done in open form, everything. The five of us are the policymakers of the town, we need to make those decisions in open form. Yeah, sometimes it's tough, the last six months being a major exception, if you could see me smile, and I'd be smiling. But, you know, when it comes to individuals needing to get information to make an appropriate vote, we all have, I'm, I'm big on the math, as you guys all know. You know, Jess, you're big on the employee, on the consumer impact, or the impact to residents in some ways, or, you know, the adding to the budget of a particular, okay, you're big on the math, too. You know, so some of those follow-ups have to happen, and if it's raised in open meeting, that, you know, Lee, I'd like a little more support for what other towns are doing with their PFAS issue, and this is what I was thinking about. Procedurally, you know, it's already been communicated in open form, go ahead and pursue that, but yeah, don't go, no one, no one here can represent the board. We represent ourselves. We represent ourselves.
So you're saying if it's raised in open meeting, a request for more information from a department, that's fine. I think Mike is saying, if the meeting ends and next week you get, someone gets it on their head that they want more information, they shouldn't go on their own requesting that information.
In fact, I think you might wanna bring that back to the open forum.
Yeah.
What I'm talking about is, you, you put not only us in an awkward position, I think you put the employee, the department head in an awkward position. You know, when we're liaisons to a board, we're, we're the liaison to the board, not the department. So like, I mean, I look at, you're having discussions with the, the assessor, he's really not the board that you have the liaison to. So...
He's part of the board.
Kind of why do you put the questions to him on behalf of, 'cause it comes across to them as if it's coming from the board?
Well, then we have to say, this is our, as your liaison, these are some of the questions, I feel, in fact, part of my job is to make sure for the tax hearing, you tell me what it is you wanna know from the board, from the assessor board. Do that here, and I will further it with some side conversations and make sure he exactly knows what the board wants for the tax hearing. That's a great example, tax hearing's a month away or so. You know, if he has some misunderstanding of what you might need or what you might require each, each of the five of us, you know, some might say, give me all of our properties and show the before and after hits, some might say, you know, give me an aggregate schedule type of thing. You know, all that can't be conveyed in a single meeting, and it's up to the, the administration, or maybe even up to us, to figure that out.
But what you just said is a perfect example of what I'm talking about, we shouldn't be doing, when you just said that you should be going...
Why not?
That you should be going to the assessor and telling him which ones that, you're the liaison to the assessor's board, you're not the liaison to the assessor. Whoever's the liaison to, say, the Board of Health or Planning Board, they shouldn't be going right to AB or whatever, they, they're the liaison between the board, the chairman...
And the entire assessor board comes to our tax rate hearing, they're part of the conversation, that is the perfect example.
All right, gentlemen, and the zoning, the, sorry, the, the assessor reports to Kevin and Barry in some relationship, right? So the questions, in my view, should go to Kevin or Barry.
I mean, if it's known that Kevin and Barry know for a fact that I'd be talking to the assessor board about whatever issues he might have, he's reached out to me as well, and so that should be, you know, an existing relationship, essentially, and not every last time you have contact with the individual, should you be going through a chain of command.
Hey, can I, I'm curious to see what Kevin or what your feeling is on this, since you're a key part of this whole chain of command.
I think that there's a delineation between going directly to department heads and trying to fulfill a specific duty that's been outlined by the board to one of your members. So I, I think that there's a clear delineation between the two, and maybe you wanna be able to work... And maybe you want to be able to work and consider some wordsmithing to be able to take into the things that you're talking about tonight. But I think that having just a discussion as relates to something that you're working on, I, I don't think that that's truly an issue, but I think that the decisions and the things that need to be impacted by the committees of the subgroups that are made, that's being done by the five of you. So as long as you set the parameters like we do for the roles and responsibilities of these specific task force or these ad hoc committees that were formed for these specific purposes, as long as that's outlined clearly in, in the task and what the responsibility is, then I would think that that would be fine.
All right. We don't want to unduly handcuff people, and yet we don't want people running, running amok. Like I said, 20 years ago, this was an issue in town, and if we can provide guidance to people, that's not too restrictive, but is, does provide guidance, that's what we'll do. We'll do the best we can. Mr. Aptwitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, having been on this board the longest, you know, I've probably served with 15 select board members, and, you know, everybody has a different style and every way about them. I think it comes down to, it's not so much, I don't think the policy's saying you can't talk to staff. I think what it's trying to say is that we, as select board people, should not be giving out assignments to staff, whether that means, and I don't mean just the select board, I mean other boards and committees. If we need to have an analysis done, fine, either at a meeting or even send Kevin and C.C. Frank, can we have the blah, blah, blah department do a five-year thing on a da, da, da? That's it. This way he knows, or whoever, this way, because, you know, if Kevin's expecting, I'm, I'm just picking on Matt, just because it's easy. If Barry's expecting him to give him something by Thursday, and I go and say, Matt, can you prepare a da, da, da? And he's like, oh, yeah, just, and he does it, then you go, you get, you, or you get, where's the thing I needed? I think that's the issue, the big issue here. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I agree.
You're spot on.
I think that's the issue. And I think we just have to be cognizant of the fact that Barry and Kevin, sorry, Kevin and Barry, I'm sorry, are the adminis, are the ch, the chief executive officers of this town. And it's really not fair for us to give employees assignments. That's kind of the way I'm looking at it. I'm not saying, I think everybody's got good intentions. It's just, we just have to be cognizant of the fact that they have a job to do.
Hey, gentlemen, do you have enough guidance to, to refine this?
Yeah, I just say one more, just really quick. I mean, that's not to say you can't go in and say, hey, do you have a copy of Article 42?
Right, a copy of an invoice.
When you're saying, hey, like you just said about, you know, something's going to take, whatever, a significant amount of time.
This has been going on for, like, I've been on 15 years, and this was worse, worse before that. Like I said, I think we're all trying to go in the right spot here. It's just, let's come up with a way that we're comfortable with it, the select board members are comfortable with it, and you guys are comfortable with it, and that's it.
One, one thing we all do a very good job is encouraging staff. I think everyone on staff knows we have their back, encouraging staff. Like, we walk in the halls, we're coming to the building, like, like today, you probably talked to two or three people on the way up here, and we're always encouraging staff and helping them and saying, hey, what's going on? We're not trying to intervene, not trying to interfere. And if we have a big request, like, like the chair just said, it's got to go through the chain of command so they can prioritize responsibilities. That's the most important thing. I don't want any of my, my employees being given assignments by some other, you know, officer of the company. That's just not appropriate. So same kind of respect, but I think we, I think we do, we do a great job encouraging our staff, whether it's here, we need to make sure that we're, you know, as the board of directors, we're acting as encouragers and not using our positions for running interference. But I do appreciate the staff. I mean, I loved working with Barry and John and others when it came to OPEB, Jaclyn when it came to the health insurance benefits. I mean, that was direct, and both Bill and Kevin knew that's what I was doing. So.
All right. Gentlemen.
Can I have?
Neil, you, you feel your?
I just want to comment, ask, Steve, you had mentioned, you know, adding ethics to this document. I mean, we are bound by the state code of ethics, and we have to, we all go through that training and all that. So is there something in addition to that?
I'll provide you something else.
So if you could provide, like, specific things you want to see?
I'll provide directly to you when I'm, when I'm thinking of it.
Okay, yeah, because, yeah, just as far as the amount of work involved, reading through 80 pages of codes of ethics, you know.
Oh, no, it's not, this is.
So if you see things that you feel are missing, you know, you could update the draft, and then we can discuss those.
Certainly.
Neil, if you need any help, I majored in ethics in college, ethics and political philosophy.
Really? Two people can look at it at a time.
Excellent.
That's part of the ethics.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, hey, if we, if we do the, our job right, Mr. Schoenfeld can, can head out to the elementary schools.
No, I got another 15 minutes.
Okay, you got another 15? Okay, so we'll, let's move along. The November meeting schedule, I think, you know, I've been, we know about the conflict in November. We can meet at 5:00 PM on those nights, or alternatively, we can meet on the Mondays you suggested, anytime we like. Now, I, I've been informed that the MFN is, is meeting on November 2nd.
The Monday before the election.
Monday before that, Wednesday. So what I'm going to suggest is, you know, grin and bear it, and can we, can we meet at 5:00 on the 4th? And then the Monday, two Mondays later, meet at 6:30.
That works.
Makes sense?
Sure.
Kind of forced into position of 5:00, but.
And also, like, Mr. Chair, I also, I spoke with Chu Sol Cede this afternoon, and he's also going to come up with, see if we could somehow synchronize that too, and maybe sneak in a light department meeting on that, one of those same nights, just so we can kind of not have a separate meeting.
You probably wouldn't be able to on the night that we're doing 5:00, though.
Right.
Which one, which one's 5:00? I have my computer.
The 4th.
The 4th.
The 4th, we're meeting.
All right, well, I told him to work it out, we'll speak with Kevin. It'd be probably the other one. All right.
Okay, review and approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, on that note, on the meetings note?
I'm sorry.
One, one thing I want to bring up, I like that we're all here today, we're in masks. But this is a concern I had in general, like, the fact that we're in masks and the kids are going to be in masks next week makes all the sense in the world. But let's say we're getting close to Thanksgiving, and I want to spend Thanksgiving with my extended family, one or two of which is an at-risk individual. I'm going to quarantine.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sorry.
I can really use you, Steve.
Say we're getting close to Thanksgiving, and I want to spend Thanksgiving with my at-risk extended family member, whether it's my mother, whatever the case may be is. I'm going to quarantine at home for 14 days before then, and so I might need to take this remotely, just so I can spend Thanksgiving with my at-risk extended family. Is that kosher with you guys?
Well, he's the chairman, it's up to the chairman.
I think that's, you know, I was going to say, exception that proves the rule, but that's, that's a misuse of that saying. But, um, yeah, I think in that case, of course, I, I would hate to see it become, you know, a regular practice, or one of us or more of us every week is, is doing it remotely. And hopefully, we won't have to revert to that, so.
It's mostly the holiday. We did this back in August when we took a one-week vacation. We all sequestered for two weeks just to be safe and had a reasonably good vacation.
But yeah, please quarantine. I appreciate that, and I'm sure your family members appreciate it more. Okay, did we vote? Okay, we're back to the review and approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, just for a quick, on the, Monday, the 16th, that's at 5:30.
Uh, can we do 6:30, man?
6:30, we said.
6:30. Since we have to start on 5:00, we kind of got forced to 5:00. I know that 5:30 is cutting it close too, so.
Big debate tonight, too.
All right, so it's November 4th at 5:00, and then November 16th at what time?
At 6:30.
6:30.
And what's next Thursday? Is that 7? The FinCom?
I can't remember.
I know, can you? That's 15. The 15th? Yeah.
And, Gary, do we have a time for the consensus meeting?
Yeah.
5:30.
Okay. And that one could be virtual.
That is going to be virtual.
Yeah, it has to be.
The crowd.
Because of every, the other parties.
For us.
And we're not meeting on the 18th, right?
Not meeting on the 18th at all, unless you guys want to. Okay, let's try this again, review and approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion in a second, no discussion. In favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5 to 0, approved. Consideration of people of town payroll warrants, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, hold on one second. Mr. Chair, if you could just start, that stuff needs to be signed. There's only one, two warrants on here, does that sound right for payroll? Thank you. Mr. Chair, move to approve town payroll, town Medicaid payroll, 210124, PT, the amount of $3.84, $3.75, and 55 cents. Second.
If you have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention? Any opposition?
No.
401 abstention, Mr. Aptwitz.
Uh, Mr. Chair, move to approve town deductions, vendor payroll, 21014, TV, the amount of Second.
Do you have a motion in a second, any discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Guys, when you're looking at the paperwork, some of them have been signed, so just go through all of them just to make sure.
So that's all. Four in favor, Mr. Schoenfeld opposed. Any correspondence?
Mr. Chair, we have a letter from Xfinity stating that many sporting events and broadcasts were put on hold this year from April through June. Xfinity has been working hard to recover the fees. Regional sports networks charge us for those sporting events and broadcasts, to pass that back onto the customers.
And that's it? Okay. All right, so therefore, members' comments and questions, Mr. Schoenfeld.
Last night, listened to the school committee meeting, there was a great presentation on COVID by, I think it's the school nurse, Christine. Absolutely amazing. I learned so much on that. She's going to be, do it again on Thursday, and I think it'll be a direct link on the Mansfield School Committee site. I'd encourage everyone to listen to that. She just did such a fantastic job. So I commend her and commend the school committee for all their diligent work in getting the schools to reopen next week. My boys are looking forward to getting back to school at least two days a week, and in general, things are going fairly well, with, you know, some mixed appetite. But I really appreciate the words she spoke last night, and, and of course, Teresa and the rest of the school committee as well. The Plemish Street Playground, I was over there just the other day, do, do we have those funds on the side? Are they just sitting there waiting to be spent?
No, so the, the issue with that is that once we had the actual consultant go and price the purchase of the equipment and the installation thereof, and the changes that were done via handicap accessibility and what's required, it's looking like a $600,000 project. So one of the things that we're addressing is to be able to readdress that issue. We have about $100,000 now, Steve, that was set aside for that project, and we did use a couple thousand dollars towards the contract to be able to get a really good estimate of what it's going to cost. So we're going to readdress that through our capital improvement plan update that we're going to be starting right now.
So it sounds like we needed a half a mil in order to make that happen?
That's correct.
Is that just due to ADA compliance?
ADA compliance and to be able to go through and have the proper, from soup to nuts, done. And it's not just dropping in a couple pieces. It would look nothing, Neil, like it does there. Rather, it would look more of what you would see over at Memorial Park type of thing, and it also includes things for taking into account older adults being with children, different types of aspects for an area for age, smaller ages, and a little bit of an older child to be able to use the facility as well, because it's a mixed-use facility of everything that goes on in the street. So it looks like it, it would probably be, if we really wanted to do it up, it could be $800,000 to $900,000. I had scaled it back to something that I thought was going to be achievable, and we're going to be updating that, of course, and you'll, you'll hear all about that through our capital improvement update.
So it's an unsafe place as it stands right now. Is there any reason why we shouldn't just bulldoze it as it is, just so that kids don't use it unsafe? I mean, even post-COVID, it gets open again, should we just get rid of everything that's there? Because it's unsightly, it's hideous.
I, I think maybe unsightly, but I never had anything in writing to say that something was unsafe. But I can, I can certainly go through and ask Jerry about that.
Yeah, just see what they want to do. If, if we could just bulldoze it and do something with the, the property, it could be extended parking, not that we need it now, but in the future we might. No, thanks for that update. I've been in search of the owner of this shoe. This and three shoes like it were in our recycling bins. So a couple Tuesdays ago, I went to the MERS, which is off of 24, to look at an audit of our recycling. And so they basically, they take a dumpster full of, a dumpster full of material from our trucks that came through, and, you know, there were some mobile grease there, oops. There was some liquid in a plastic bottle, which is a no-no, it was brown liquid. There were these notebook finders that actually, because it's, it's combined materials, it's metal and paper, they couldn't recycle it. So it was a really interesting day, this is, we figured out how, how much Lee actually weighs, he stepped in the scale to make sure it worked. You know, a really insightful day of looking at, you know, what it is, the process. I mean, it's a really interesting plant, they do a lot of good stuff. I saw an entire bin full of pots and pans that people thought they could recycle. So, yeah, there were four of those Converse All-Stars in the recycling bin, and five notebooks. And together, the combined weight of those nine items went, took us from like a 10% contamination rate to a 18% contamination rate. And 18% means potential penalties. We talked about this and showed some other slides at the last Trash Recycling meeting, but one of the key things we're doing is education and enhancing that more and more and more. You know, you can see there are some, some plastic bags here, it wasn't too bad. There are some food scraps. I'll probably post some of these pictures on, online for everyone to see, but, you know, it was a really insightful opportunity. I think in the next meeting, or maybe the meeting thereafter, the committee is going to provide a brief memo to the board to vote upon, and that's with respect to the Mansfield Green. So if I get that ready before the next meeting, perhaps we add it to the agenda, if not, it could be the following meeting. But we're getting close in terms of identifying what are the initiatives we could actually do to help improve the future. And just to put you guys thinking about these things, there's two major decisions that we have. The first one is our collection contract, which is about a year away renewal. That's huge. And the second is, in '28, I think it is, 2028, is the actual disposal contract, which is very favorable right now. We have, we have it good. We have it very good when it comes to trash recycling. We can make it better. And so we'll give you an update at a future meeting and one potential policy change to make, but we expect to have something early, I say late winter, early spring, to truly act upon so that we can negotiate that next collections contract, the important one with waste management. If you find someone that likes Converse All-Stars, politely ask them not to throw them in the Yes, get a pink bag and put them in there. A couple things, I, I appreciate our conversation last week on the budget, I want to reemphasize a couple things. That 2.7 million that we plan on putting into the FinCom reserve, that, like I said[1687.73] That 2.7 million that we plan on putting into the Finkham Reserve, like I said last week, if we could have a list of items that would be reasonably expected to be, for that money to be spent on, so that the residents know exactly what they're approving, and I think I mentioned last week, the PFAS, what are other towns doing about it, just so there's comparative things. So this is preparation for next Thursday. And, okay, so Nelson Nygaard, the one question I have on that, Kevin, is, one of the controversial items they mentioned at the, what do we call it, it was open discussion, was extending the hours for downtown Main Street parking. Is it three or four hours, was it? Four? Is that still part of their proposal?
It was for four.
Okay, and have we had a chance to ask residents and ask, I mean, that wasn't a highly-attended forum. Is there a way to ask residents ahead of time whether they'd appreciate that, as well as business owners on the street?
So Steve, that's a good point. One of the things that we had talked about last time was to give one more public opportunity. So what my thought was, is to be able to present the updated version of the final plan with the proper appendancy that's attached to it with the rules and regulations for your viewing, and then accept any final types of questions and comments, and then roll it out to a public opportunity as well. And that would be our last public opportunity before we would seek a vote from your honorable body.
When were you thinking of doing that, roughly?
So we would like that done before the end of the year. That's our goal.
So it's something we can implement in spring then, or something, or winter, yeah?
At the first of the year.
If it's frozen, it might be tough to put signs up or just cement. An observation, I've been looking, not that I've been looking to move, but looking at recent sales of residential homes, and Jess, you're all over this, I'm sure, there's, you know, the market is huge, the market is hot, the market is really high right now, and you see a lot of sales-to-assessment ratios that are pretty high, well over the 10% threshold you normally see. I got to be thinking, you know, what does that mean for the future of our taxes? And if residential values are going up significantly this past year and probably into the next year, because interest rates remain low, I think we're going to see some pressure on the split, basically, to keep raising the split over time. So just a thought I had as I was looking at a couple of recent sales, you know, properties that were assessed at $500,000. Exactly, exactly. So the future trend is that split's going to get pressed even further and further, so just a thought.
Just, that's a good point, because houses are selling in Mansfield right now, Steve makes a good point, I mean, $30,000, $40,000 over asking. I mean, I had a, there was a showing I took my clients to a couple weeks ago, there were 42 scheduled showings in a weekend. That's like insane.
Yeah, I think that's a great question.
You have 10 minutes, you have to get out. I mean, because of COVID, I'm like, you know, it's just, it's great for the town because people want to come here, and it's all good, but, you know, there's no inventory.
Right.
And stuff's like, stuff's just flying.
Right. So as they prepare, as the board assessors prepare for the tax split discussion, if there are any questions you guys want answered, if there's any thoughts like this one we just had, send them my way, and I'll make sure we get them done.
I do think that, I mean, personally, I got, like, you know how to do your escrow analysis once a year? My escrow went up like $200, because, one is because the taxes went up, and second, they have to increase what they hold. So I'm like, that's a big jump.
Right.
And I think we're going to hear, we're going to start hearing some of that, so I think we're going to have to be able to explain to people what's going on.
Last thing is a bit of humor, if you would humor me. I mentioned George earlier, and if you remember, when Whitney Houston died, George saying, "I'll always love you," right? It's on YouTube. So Eddie Van Halen died yesterday. Nobody wants to sing? I'm not going to sing, nobody wants to sing? You know, maybe a little jump or eruption or?
I want to sing the song, "I'll Make a Motion."
I could do some air guitar.
There you go. There you go, but he did die, and it, yeah, very talented.
Yeah, that's too, that's too bad. My son was kind of upset.
That is too bad, but I don't listen to that newfangled music, so.
I'm done, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Trobridge.
I have no questions, just one quick statement. I'm seeing more and more work going on uptown, and I've said this probably a couple times over the last year, I'll say it again, the downtown has never looked as nice as it has without the improvements we've done over the last several years. So it's looking really good up there, and I thank everybody for the hard work.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Aptwitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make just a general statement. You know, I know Kevin reopened the town hall recently, and some people have this misnomer of downtown that, over the last seven months, that, you know, employees might not have been working or busy, and that is totally 300% untrue. In fact, they've been working harder because there's so many different things they have to do, just I mean tonight, and I want to thank publicly Carrie, Nancy, Barry, Kevin, and all the staff. I mean, especially the people that are, you know, Carrie and Nancy who do all of our stuff. I mean, just tonight, the paperwork was like this, and I'm sure Jackie had to help out. I mean, there's a lot of work that's being done, and so I'd like the public to know that everyone's there busting their tails in here, so. Kudos, Kevin, if you could thank everybody, and Barry, your people, I would appreciate that. This is, it's like a 70/30 between the light department and the board, but the light department has a contract with a company that goes around those tree trimming branches. There are a lot of trees around town that I think maybe in the public, you know, the easement, the trees look like, I mean, the branches aren't an issue, but the trees itself look like they're a little shaky. I don't know if they're rotted, twisted, but I don't know if there's any way that, I mean, it doesn't have to be like a, an assignment, but if like, department heads or like the DPW people, if they see trees that look like there's an issue, if they can put a list together, and we might have to talk about removing them, because they're going to come down at some point, and let's be, let's be progressive, then wait for it to happen. And I mentioned earlier, I did talk to Joe Solcito about a couple issues, and in fact, tonight, there was supposed to be a big win advisory, so.
And we heard it.
Yeah, so there is a crew that's on standby, just so everybody knows, if they have a problem after hours, you call the police and they dispatch. So hopefully, no one has any power outages, and with that said, I'm all set, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Aptwitt, Vice Chairman Ryan.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Jess. That was number one on my list, was just to thank Nancy and Carrie, you know, for the fact that we're meeting in person, and Kevin and Barry, because I know that, you know, we've been talking about that for a while, some people were getting a little impatient, myself included. So thanks for pulling it together, and it seems to have gone pretty well, and we even had the simulcast going there, so that's, that's good. So I think, again, people shouldn't take these things for granted, there's a lot of new technology, everyone's learning, so good job. Number two, I would just say, best wishes to the schools, as Steve mentioned, you know, the school committee and Teresa obviously have a tough job these days, no matter what they decide, someone's not going to be happy, so hopefully, everyone follows the public health guidance, and our schools remain in-person or hybrid for the rest of the year. To that end, a little public service announcement, I got a flu shot today. I know the governor is, you know, strongly recommending everyone do that. You can go right on CVS.com and schedule it virtually, although the Mansfield one, I got the last shot available today. So they recommend that if you don't want to have that problem, like if you go to the Target stores where they have the CVSs, or Walgreens, other chains obviously have them as well, but there's a lot of demand, so if you want to get one, act quickly, I would say. Question on the, on the voting, when does early voting start? Do we know the actual date?
Didn't you put out a list of the days?
Yes.
Now, I think there was an email with all the dates.
Okay, is it roughly like a week before, two weeks before? All right. 16th to 17th? All right, so whatever the date is, I just encourage people to go on the town website, find out, plan your vote, as they say, and do it as safely as possible, whether it's in person or through the mail. And lastly, I just thought we were discussing our goals over the last month or so, so I have that spreadsheet updated, about 99% there. I'll probably send it out to you all tomorrow, so we can revisit that when, when we have time. But I got it down to like, I think it's 25 goals, and maybe we can, might be able to, we may be able to call it down into about 20 with a little more work, so. That's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I want to echo what Mr. Aptwitt said, I just in general want to, I think we all appreciate the general patience and, and, you know, consideration that most people in town seem to be having towards each other. It's going to be, I'm no expert, it's going to be a tough period, they're talking about some upticks in some of the statistics, we really don't know what this winter's going to bring us, but if we continue to be vigilant and do the basic things that everyone agrees